There's no changes. What I will do is when we get close, or here, I'll give Ross a call here for the sheriff's update in just a minute. So that way he could just talk through my computer. We'll just try that.
Okay.
Just a heads up.
That works. If nobody's got any changes to the regular agenda, I'm going to accept a motion to accept.
David.
Dave?
So moved.
Alright, can I get a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second. So all in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous. Consent agenda. See, we got stuff on there. I guess I didn't really have any questions on any of that unless anybody else does. Like standard operating procedure, but. Unless you guys had, unless Jim or you had anything you wanted to add to that?
Noah, the first one is just a semifinal estimate on Ruben District to the seventeen-one Lost River. It's just for work up to date. We're cleaning up the quantities. We're cleaning up all the final records on that one. And the balancing change order is a deductive change order of seventy-one thousand five thirty-eight and change. That is balancing the constructed contract with the, with the as, the as constructed quantities to the contract. So that's our balancing. The other two are just work, work to date, cleaning up the two thousand nineteen quantities before we start the two thousand twenties. So.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions on that? On the consent agenda? Okay, I'll accept a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
Brian makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
John? Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 We'll move along. Alright, also minutes from last time. Seemed to me that everything was in order on that one, stuff that we talked about, so.
Other than the length of the meeting?
Minus that little bit, yeah.
I think that's a record for the longest meeting you've had.
Yeah.
I missed a good one.
We gotta work on that.
John and I were involved in some longer ones.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from March sixteenth meeting.
Alright, Dave makes a motion. Can we pipe in there?
Second.
Okay, Brian does a second. Right, all in favor say aye.
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 Move along. Okay, special counsel minutes. From the meeting that we had. That was pretty much cut and dried too, unless you guys, I didn't see anything in there. Okay.
Motion approved.
Alright, Brian does motion to approve.
Dave, second.
Dave, I'll put you down a second, so all in favor say aye.
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 Unanimous, alright. Well, if you want to public comment, Brian, being you've got the levers there, they got their hands up for any comments, anything?
I'm not seeing anything. No, I'm carrying full screen. I lost the panel. Can any of you guys see?
There it is. Okay. Alright.
There's. Go ahead, sorry.
I'm just gonna say.
But there's anything.
I can't see anybody raising the hand, so I'm assuming you could potentially see that when you go back to the panel.
I can't see the chat window.
Okay, go up to the very top where it says view options, exit out of full screen mode. And then go down to your bottom and then turn back on the participant panel. And you can undock it if you'd like to.
Oh, I see, it's right here. I don't see anything right offhand.
So either people can put their information, I believe, in the chat window. Or I'm not sure if there's a Q and A is open as well, Brian?
Yeah, the Q and A should be open.
I don't see any open questions that are posted there.
Nope. Alright, we're gonna move along then. I'm gonna go on to the sheriff's update. Brenton, did you get ahold of anybody?
Yep, I have Ross on the phone now. I've been on mute that way.
Yeah.
We just listen there, but I do have Ross on the phone, so he can give an update for you.
Alright.
We'll try, we'll see if you can hear.
Everybody got me? Everybody can hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I'll just rush through the stuff here and I'll give a quick. About what we're kind of doing during this interesting time. So first I'll just kind of start with the month. Calls or service are down about a hundred eleven. The only other really, the number on there. Those are all unrelated calls. Believe they're all traffic stops, personal use stuff, found cars, level, nothing like that. I'll through the paragraph I wrote as well, it's a hundred, no service. This number includes twelve calls related to traffic complaints, those five calls will be demanding warrants for civil papers. With the uncertain times facing our end and our financial difficulties, we're supposed to continue to do a great job of practicing social distancing, personal hygiene. Our office will continue to do our best to maintain safety in the community through this trying period. No major calls to note in the city. I'll just kind of elaborate a little, I'll add that paragraph, kind of like you said. Kind of the way we're operating. You know, we're still, we're still responding to person, and pretty much any problem the public has, we're something a little different. Obviously, with the public in mind and the sake of our office. System, any. Person face-to-face interaction to it, at least for that initial, it ends up being a bit of a situation that we have to get. We're still keeping traffic remote, that's our main thing. I've heard people saying that, you know, stop. You know, kind of suggests we still kind of looking for that, we are for sure. That hasn't been a huge event in the city, I believe, had a couple people be over in town, thought I wasn't there, but. Yeah, so we're still, we're looking at those people out there. We just, we're just kind of operating a little bit of a difference. So, anyone got any questions back here?
Anybody have any questions?
No.
No, I think we're good. Alright, well, thanks for getting with us tonight.
Yeah, thanks for having me, guys.
Talk to you later. Alright, move on to number nine here, the Rivers Edge second addition. Barrett, you want to pick that up?
Yeah, thank you. What do you want me to show? You want me to show the PowerPoint?
Yeah, I think that, please.
Okay, coming up.
Okay.
Hey, Brian, quick, can I just, everyone make a suggestion? I texted it to you, but if you're not speaking, if you hover your mouse over your picture, there's three dots. If you guys click that, you can pick to, or mute or unmute yourself. I'd recommend you mute yourself, so we don't get that background echo from any of the rooms as much as possible, so.
Thank you. Okay, Barrett.
Okay, thank you. If I can have you move to the first picture where it just kind of shows the overall general plan, please. If you just want to go forward one more, one more time. Yeah, just right there, thank you. So for item number nine, just as a recap, during the last city council meeting on March sixteenth, when this application was heard, the council directed the applicant to work with both the Dreamfields and Rivers Edge addition neighborhoods with the goal of establishing consensus on a preliminary plat design that everyone could agree to. After the meeting, the applicant and the neighborhood representatives met with staff and provided staff with the concept of a preliminary plat design that all parties agreed to. This is kind of the overall plan that was shown, but if I have to go to the next slide. I'm sorry, one more. Yeah, one more time. This just kind of shows some of the proposed changes that the neighborhood and the applicant agreed on when they put together a concept of the plat. And I'll just kind of go over some of the quick changes that had occurred. So during this stage, they proposed removing dedicated public right-of-way of two road connections, Seventy-sixth Street and Eighty-second Avenue along Memory Lane. A lot combination of two lots with a combined width of a hundred and fifty feet was created to create a larger lot on the northernmost lots of Rivers Edge addition on the west side of Memory Lane down in the corner. Then an increase of lot width, stall lots that are butted at the Linear Park on the north was made to increase them from seventy-five feet to eighty-five feet. There's discussion of provision of a temporary road to run west of Dreamfields addition and connect with Rivers Edge Lane. And then there was a multi-use path proposed that would leave the Linear Park on the north, travel down Rivers Edge Lane, cross Memory Lane, and run between two lots in the southwest direction with the intention to connect to a future retention pond. And then that path, area that ran between the two lots would be proposed to be a drain achievement. So when staff reviewed the proposal, we thought most of it looked okay. However, we did see a conflict with lot widths. So we, the applicant went back again and provided yet another iteration of the plat. If I could have you go to the next image here. This next concept pretty incorporates everything that was provided on a proposal that was created by the neighborhoods and the applicant, with the exception of the right-of-way access point off of Memory Lane. They re-added back an Eighty-second Avenue, so there, we don't see any issues with this plat not complying with our zoning ordinances. So, once again, not too much has changed. The applicant is proposing a single-family subdivision development with under thirty-foot wide Linear Park on the north. It's still the intention to have that connect to the FM diversion in the future. It proposes a connection of Memory Lane from Seventy-sixth Avenue South to Eighty-eighth or Wall. And the subdivision would provide full city services when required, one lot minimums for septic systems. The development would provide larger lots over acre along the Cheyenne River and then recede into smaller lots westward. But the minimum lot sizes would still adhere to the minimum lot requirements of the R-two zoning requirements. The developers now proposing a seventy-five lot, six blocks subdivision. And so, with staff evaluated density, it became even less dense. And now as a lower density, we're now looking at about two point five four units per acre. To, and then in addition with the land dedication requirements, the details of the land dedication are still being discussed at this point, and we anticipate something in the future if this application were to reach a final plat stage. And just as a reminder, the proposed subdivision isn't located in city limits, but it's located in the extra territory of jurisdiction. So staff will recommend that for the final plat is submitted that, that this property would be annexed into the city. Staff evaluated the application and finds that the city ordinance requirements have been met, follow the other issues are accounted for, and those issues are listed as conditions of approval, which can be shown on the last slide here. And therefore, staff recommends approval of the proposed preliminary plat as outlined on the PowerPoint slide. And if you have any questions, please let me know.
Okay, anybody have any questions on that, concerns?
Yeah, I do have a question. So the one, I think it's lot ten, is that what the one is? It's quite large up by that borders up against Dreamfields. Is that public? Is that where the, the, the road or the use pass and then everything is going to continue, or is that a sellable lot?
Correct, that's going to be a part of the Linear Park. That'll be zone PF.
Okay, thank you. I guess I do have a second question. Is it used to have, I believe, three roads along the backside that outletted into the additional area and, or three or four, and a few of them have been reduced. I noticed that it's been moved more to the center to accommodate, I'm assuming, block length concerns. Is that correct, Barrett?
That's correct, yep.
Okay, I guess my only question would be, Russ, I believe is on the phone now. Do you have any concerns with just this one outlet versus the multiple? I know that was a discussion between the homeowners of the other developments and this one.
No, no.
Okay. That's all my questions.
Alright, anybody have any other questions on this? John, you're okay with it? Chelsea? John, you're on mute.
I agree with Dave asked me. Hey, no, I think this accommodates what everybody's wishes are. I think we've got an opportunity to control some traffic flow. Going to be another nice addition to Memory Lane, to Dreamfields and Rivers Edge first, so I think it blends well.
Okay, Chelsea, have any comments on it?
I was just happy to see that they were able to get together and have a conversation. So I hope that everybody can, you know, be pleased with the final outcome.
I would concur with that, so.
Agreed.
Alright, so if that's the case, then I'm gonna be looking for somebody to do a motion to accept the preliminary plat as is.
I made that motion.
Okay, John makes a motion.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, that was everyone. Alright, so that's unanimous, alright, perfect. Moving along to number ten. Barrett, you got that one too?
What you have before you, it's just a second reading of a zoning change. This was the application from Jesse and Sarah Owens to change it from R-one, single-family residential to SR suburban residential for the property located at Seventy-four ninety-seven Hundredth Avenue South. And then this application was submitted to rectify an issue to allow seventy-by-hundred-twenty-foot accessory structure that would be twenty-five feet in height. And this is just to follow up with a city council directive where a variance was approved to allow for this structure on the condition that this property would be your zone. Since the first reading of this application, staff hasn't received any comments, and we continue to recommend approval of the application.
So there was no change to this zoning ordinance from the last review?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay. Being there wasn't any changes, we did go through with the first reading, so unless you guys have any other questions, I'd say, you know, wait for a motion to accept the second reading.
So moved.
Okay. Did that, Brian?
Second.
Got it. Okay, Brian did a second. Alright, all in favor say aye.
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 Yep, everybody.
I gotta, I gotta unmute for them.
Alright, and that motion carries. So on to the next one. Number eleven. Barrett, you got that one too?
What you have before you is an amended second reading of a zoning ordinance amendment to allow for private streets and undefined block lengths. Councilman Schmidt, if you wouldn't mind going to the PowerPoint, I'd just like to point out the language that got.
I don't see another PowerPoint.
It should be in the PowerPoint that was provided, I believe.
Oh, it's in the same PowerPoint, just to.
Correct, yep.
Okay. This one?
If you could keep on going down, please. And then I believe it's the first page.
This one?
No, I apologize. It looks like the third page. Sorry, next one. Yeah, the only language that we altered is if you look under the exemptions to black links, where it looks like it didn't show up on this PowerPoint, but it says properties that about a river, former current railroad, and/or the language that we wanted to add was existing drain. I guess the scenario that we would like to avoid is to have someone build a drain in the hopes of circumventing the block length requirement. So we would like to continue to recommend this language for approval with the addition that we state and/or existing drain.
Okay. Alright, anybody got any questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Lucas. Can I just ask a quick question? So Barrett, when you say existing drain, do you mean like, like an assessment drain, or what type of drain would that be considered?
I think the drain that we had in mind was a drain that was established or constructed prior to an application being received for a plat. I don't think we really want to differentiate unless somebody has a recommendation on what they would like to see excluded, but we would assume that would be for all drains.
Okay. Alright, anybody else have any other questions?
Any feedback from planning and zoning, or John? On this?
No, I did talk to Barrett a little bit this last week, and I think leaving it the way the language is, I think, makes a lot of sense, and it gives Barrett the ability to do his job.
Yep, that's straight, so. Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I'm gonna accept the motion.
I would make that motion to approve.
Okay, John makes. Brian does a second. Okay, all in favor say aye.
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 Alright, passes. Alright, Lucas, you got the West Fargo School Edition Pond Lot Use Agreement.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I believe you are seeing the same screen I'm seeing. So that is the Pond Lot Use Agreement. This is the pond that is on the school's new property for the middle school and the high school. This, this pond will be located on Auditor's Lot Number One, which is a subdivision of Lot One, Block Two of the West Fargo School Edition. And what this agreement does is just outline basically the, the party's rights and responsibilities for that pond that's on that lot. The city actually will own the lot once this, this agreement and the exhibits are approved. The school intends on transferring ownership of the lot to the city so long as they can continue to use it for their purposes, which they intend on, on using the water that's collected in there for irrigation purposes. So like I said before, this basically gets into how the school can actually use the property and, and what they're responsible for. Basically, any improvements that they put in is at their cost, they're liable for it if anyone gets hurt. Messing around, I guess, with any of those improvements that's on the school, not on the city. But the city will actually own that lot. So that's the, the use agreement is basically just outlining what I said. And then discusses when the parties will actually close on that, that transfer from the school to the city. And then if you look at Exhibit A, that's the warranty deed for this, this lot, so that deed, like I said, is being transferred from the school to the city. And part of that Exhibit B is a permanent easement for that lot. So basically, that permanent easement is showing the access that the school will have after they transfer this lot to the city. That way they don't have to ask for permission every time that they want to use the, the pond lot. And so that's, that permanent easement actually has its own exhibit as well, and it's a twenty-foot wide strip of land that they're having for that, for their access to that pond. So I guess with that, the motion that we would be looking for tonight, Mr. Mayor, is to approve the Pond Lot Use Agreement and to approve the transfer of the lot from the school to the city.
Okay. Yeah, again, nothing unusual here. We've kind of talked about this before, so this is coming, which is a matter of getting it formalized, so.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, if I just may add, this is also part, it was part of the, the developer's agreement that was executed between the, the city and the, and the school, saying that they would enter into this agreement at a future date for this transfer.
Correct, yep. Okay. Alright, so anybody have any questions, or?
So, I thought, it's interesting, why is this twenty foot, it's just this access to this pond?
That's correct. Because the city, the city will own the rest of that property. All this, the school wants is they want to have access to it, because all they're doing is they're putting in their irrigation improvements. Really, they just need to get to that far into the property, and they'll have the access ingress and egress that they need for this, for the use of that pond lot.
So it's everything outside of this area, with the exception of this little space, who the city will own?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. And right now, that, that area is designed for stormwater, correct? That's a stormwater retention area?
It is.
That's my understanding of it.
Mm-hmm. So.
So, so Councilman Schmidt, part of that agreement also says that if the pond gets below a certain point, they're no longer permitted to drain from it, because engineering was concerned that if that gets too low, that there may be issues there. So we do have that written into the agreement that they're only authorized to drain it down to a certain point. And then once it gets to that elevation, the, the city can actually stop them from irrigating any further.
Okay, because I was just thinking if, if water is going to be standing in there, that could potentially pose an issue for mosquito control and, and other issues, right?
There are arrators in those ponds too, or that pond too.
Say, say that again, Jim?
There are arrators in that pond too.
Oh, okay, so it's intended to, to essentially permanently hold water to some level?
Yes.
Okay. Similar to the pond right next to Cheyenne? Cheyenne School?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, I know what you're talking about. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Alright, so looking for a motion here to accept.
Most approved.
Brian does a motion. Get a second?
John gave a second.
Sorry, John. Talked over you. Alright, so all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now, passes. Okay, on to the sewer improvement district. Jim, you got this, and Lucas, you're in on it still.
Yeah, so I can give a little bit of a summary leading up to this. This project has been in the works for many years. As you can see, it's a two thousand and eighteen project. This originally came to the city as part of the Olivia Acres addition, then they first came forward with that project south of Hundredth Avenue. Once Olivia's Acres kind of fizzled out and no longer was done, it was put on the back burner. Now that Maple Lakes is coming too, and they're ready to bid that, or ready to advertise that project for bids, we come to the needing, necessity to redo, restart this project or keep it going. And this is a sanitary sewer lift station in Forest Main. The original project had the Forest Main going into the city's lagoons. We're able to shorten up that run now and take it to Visto's addition with the installation of the Visto sanitary sewer last summer. So this project consists of a, of a lift station for that area of Maple Lakes plus, plus the surrounding, as far as we can get the grade to work out on that. And then it would discharge into Visto's, and for now, it will go to the lagoon. Eventually, it can go to Fargo.
Okay. So Jim, is this, this improvement district that we put together, is this overlap any with the one that the improvement district that we did for the SSL Part One?
If you remember correctly, the SSL had a improvement district of citywide, so anything we do a sewer will overlap with that one.
Yeah, so I'm just double checking here, because I couldn't remember. Obviously, I didn't remember it was a full city. I just, it was one of those things, so, okay. Alright.
There's the district boundary, yep.
Okay.
There was a question that I saw pop up on chat, and the area that is being developed is if you look at the thirty on the, on the section thirty, just to the, just to the north and east of that, so over, move your cursor down, 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 over to the left just a hair, right in there. Yep, that's the Maple Lakes addition, yep.
Oh, okay, so this is the actual development area right here?
Yep, yep, but we've got that lift station size to handle as much as we can in that district boundary.
So future development over here, and if any of these. So future development over here and if any of these developments fill out, then it will handle that. And essentially, we're bringing the connection to right here or is it coming up County 17 a ways?
To the right, just a hair. Go down?
Oh, here.
Up and, up and to the left, three lots.
Oh, right in here.
Down.
Here?
Down, one lot.
Oh, right here. Okay. So that, that actually reduces the cost, overall cost by shortening that run for the making the connection?
It's, it's a little bit shorter, yep.
Right in here, okay.
Okay, then, yeah. So it does give the other residents there the option of being able to hook in at some point if this, the septic systems need to be, or if the state starts deeming it or Cast Public Health starts deeming it, they'll have the capacity to do it. So. Okay.
I guess I want to make sure we state that this water, this sewer improving district is just for the, it's not for any of the sewer, or any sewer lines or anything in the development. It is just for that approximate lift station and getting a pipe generally out to that lift station, correct?
Correct, yes. Just the, not the immediate improvements of this, the improvement district, but to the regional improvements of a lift station in Forest Main. Yep, that's why I broke it out.
Okay.
This is the location of it.
Okay. So that's why it's a little bit further run because this is centrally located to any sewer from this area to create that Forest Main. Would there need to be any lift station if, when this develops?
Probably, but.
That would be tied into this development?
It would be tied into that development and then it would go into that Forest Main parallel to 100th Avenue.
So would the port, this portion of this lift station be factored into this development?
What was that again, Brian?
So would the cost of this lift station and this Forest Main, would that portion be assessed more heavily to this new development?
It sure, it sure can, yeah. They would receive the most direct benefit from it.
Correct, because that's the primary reason for the development is that, you know, for at least this portion, you know, this serves everyone in the whole area. This portion serves, well, there again, that, it's a portion because it could be used for all these houses down here, right?
Yeah, the benefit would be the most in that Maple Lakes, then it could go expand out with lease.
Right. For any development here or here?
Yep, or even to the north there, we'd be able to utilize a portion of this project.
Right.
Okay, anybody else have any comments, questions on that?
I mean, obviously, there's a lot, a lot of concerned residents. And I think, you know, the assessment committee is the one that just decides who gets how much assessed. And it makes sense that existing houses would, obviously, they're not going to be assessed what the development is getting assessed. I'm just trying to get more information that can at least alleviate some of the questions or worry, I guess, from some of the residents.
Jim, would you want to explain that a little bit about how that, that's working right now? Even though I know we're, we're way, long way away from any assessment committee talk. That's going to be, that's going to be way down the road here. But for the initial, when you take a first blush at this, could you explain that maybe a little bit?
So what we've done in the past is we've had separate tiers of benefit. So the Maple Lakes would be 100% benefit and then maybe if you get out to the next ring of development would be 50% benefit. And then the next ring would be a 75, or a, be 75 and then 50 and then like a 25% assessment, working, it's working its way out. And I would assume that something along those lines would be used for this too, depending upon the Special Assessment Commission. There has been a history of making things equal, but I think that this is a project where the, the tiered effect does work a little bit better than having everything just be a flat equal.
Right.
And this lift, lift station is something that they have to have if they were to need sewer, which down the road, and it may be a long ways down the road, is a good potential that that will happen rather than having septic tanks.
Correct, yeah. The Maple Lakes Edition was approved without septic tanks. The lots aren't big enough and the direction from the city was to not have septic tanks anymore. So this is a municipal system. It's always been in the long-range CIP to have these 100th Avenue be a trunk line over to Fargo 100th, 88, 76, 64. We've gone through that numerous times. So this is the start, the start of that. This is some long-range planning.
Right. And I would think that the new developments are going to be the one to pay the bulk of this.
Right.
Way. The other places there have the option to be able to hook into this. Again, we don't know down the road here what's going to happen with the, as the city grows a little bit more, whether, you know, septic systems are going to be able to be maintained inside the city. And it's going to get to be beyond us making that judgment call. It'll be Cast Public Health or even the Department of Public Health will be making those calls. So it was just a plan, plan for planning ahead. Okay, anybody else have any other questions on this? Again, like Jim, I, I think we talked about this before. This is kind of like the initial boundary layout. This may change, but this is how we, we have to start at some, some point.
Well, the layout, the boundary will stay the same. It's just a matter of the properties within the boundary to get assessed. And we've, we've found out that things move awfully fast and hoarse. So it's better to make the boundaries bigger than smaller because there's a lot of moving parts. And sometimes, we haven't come into it yet, but we've come close to where there's been benefit to a project that's been outside of the boundary because it was too small in the beginning. So we're trying to resize the boundaries now and err on the side of, of making them right-sized.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have any other questions, concerns?
So is the, oh, okay, nevermind.
Okay. Anybody else? Hey, Lucas, you got anything you want to add in on this?
Uh, no, do you want me to, to start with the resolution creating the district?
Yeah, unless, Jim, unless you've got some other, something else you want to add on here?
I do not.
There. All right. Well, go ahead, Lucas. Why don't you just start and explain some of this a little bit?
Yep, so, Mr. Mayor, the, the first one is the resolution creating the district. And what this resolution does is it sets that district boundary and it just titles the district. So in, in this case, the district is being titled Sanitary Sewer Improvement District Number 2018 dash 01. And as you've seen, the district boundary map has been provided and we've, we've looked at that on the screen. And again, the boundary includes areas larger than, than what property may actually be assessed. It's not necessary that, that all those properties in fact will receive an assessment. The reason that this is done is in case they do receive an assessment, we want to make sure that the property is included in that boundary now so we don't have to miss out on any, any opportunities to, to have an assessment there to lower this cost for everyone that, that is involved with this project. And again, for this process, once this project is constructed, the engineer and attorney will present to the Special Assessment Commission and discuss, you know, kind of a breakdown of, of how engineering and legal thinks that the properties are benefited by the project. And then we provide any additional information that the Special Assessment Commission needs at that time. Residents that are included in this improvement district will all receive notice of that hearing in front of the Special Assessment Commission. And they are able to attend that hearing and provide any inputs that they desire to present to the Special Assessment Commission, discussing the assessment that is proposed to be levied on their property. After the Special Assessment Commission has that hearing, they can make adjustments to the, the amount of the assessment. And then they will confirm that assessment list. And that assessment list then gets presented to the city council. And again, residents in the improvement district boundary will be notified of that hearing as well. And the opportunity to discuss any concerns that they have with the city council before that list is actually, before the assessment list is actually confirmed by the city council. And then those assessments levied to property owners. Something to address too, that's important, is under Century Code, the city is only required to publish notice in the newspaper for those hearings. However, with past projects, very recently, the city council has said that it would like letters to be sent to property owners. So in the future, for this project, it'll be included. Letters will be sent to landowners informing them of hearings in front of the Special Assessment Commission and the city council. And they will have an opportunity to present their concerns at that time. So just because the property is included in the boundary now does not mean that that property will receive an assessment in the future. So just to make that clear, because I, I do see that there are some concerns in the chat that are popping up. So I hope that, that answers the question. The city council will not have an answer as far as who's getting assessed and what that assessment amount is until after the Special Assessment Commission meets. And, and then, like I said, lenders will have an opportunity to present in front of both bodies.
Right, and the Special Assessment Committee, I mean, we're talking quite a ways out here too. So that's why we need to get the letters out to the folks so they know when this is, when this is going to happen. This won't be, you know, this next three months anyway, or four. It'll be a little later down the road.
It'll, it'll actually be, the assessment won't be levied until probably, the start of, it'll be next year because we have to have these assessments to the county by October. And I'm not sure how long this project will take to construct. And Jim will have more input on that. But it's, it's after that, that construction, then we have to present those costs to the Special Assessment Commission and to the city council. So I don't see there being enough time to get that done this year. And with the way the bonding is going to work for this project, it's roped in with, with other developments. And those developments will not be done this year. So, so this will not be done this year. So they do have quite a bit of time before these numbers will actually get presented to the Special Assessment Commission and the city council.
Okay. Okay, Jim, anything you want to add in on that or, I think you pretty did a good wrap-up on it?
Uh, no, I don't have anything else. There's any specific questions? So.
No, but I mean, if we're talking of that, this thing probably wouldn't get completed until this fall, right?
Yes, 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 yes. It would be October at the absolute earliest.
Yeah, so it would be, yeah, all right. Okay. All right, anybody have any other questions? Okay. All right, Lucas, what do you need us to do here then?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the first action item is just the resolution creating the district. So we just need a motion to create the district, which is Sanitary Sewer Improvement District Number 2018 dash 01. And the, the boundary map, that was previously shown to the council to approve that as well.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Brian, make some motion. Second?
Second.
Okay, John does a second. Okay. All right, all in favor of resolution creating the district, say aye.
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 Okay, is everybody unanimous? All right, onto the next one, Lucas.
So the next one, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution directing the engineer to prepare an engineering report on the project as to the general nature, purpose, and feasibility of the project. So basically, just saying that, you know, is this project something that is feasible for the city to prove, to approve?
Yep, because we're looking for some numbers here to get an idea of what we're dealing with. So. All right. Okay, Brian, make some motion?
John.
I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, John makes the motion, Brian does a second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Yeah, unanimous, we'll move along to the resolution approving preliminary engineering report.
So Brian, if you go to the.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Jim, what?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just touch on this quick. The reason that the engineer has this done already is, is like he indicated earlier on, this, this property was already proposed to be platted with Olivia's Acres. So we were on the ball with this one and moving it forward before. And so now, it's just basically the development has a new name, but the project is, is still there. So that's why now we're on the resolution to actually approve that preliminary engineering report, which is what Jim will present on now.
Well, so just, so what we just approved was creation of this report?
No, the, yes.
So.
What you just approved was directing the engineer to prepare the report that's in front of you now.
Yeah. It was, okay.
And that's why I, I provided that information. Like the reason that it's in front of you already is because this was for Olivia's Acres.
It's odd because we already approved it some time ago, but it was old, so we have to redo it.
You just approved it in a draft form when it was Olivia's Acres. So this is, it was never officially, the resolution was never done at that time. So this was updated to the, to the Maple Lake Estates. The cost was updated, the location map was updated, and some of the specifics were updated to the engineering part of it. So.
Okay.
So what you will notice is that the district boundary was kind of shrunk a little bit. And that has to do with the fact that Visto's was installed last summer. The, prior to Visto's industrial addition improvements being done, the nearest connection point was all the way up on Nelson and Eighth Street. With the addition of the Visto's sewer, we were able to shave off all that distance and go right to the corner of 17 and 14.
Right, so this, this, this district boundary is smaller than what we approved before.
It doesn't go as far north, yes.
Right.
Okay. So Jim, this is a little bit, the, the numbers, I assume, would have gone down a little bit from when we first ran through this just because you don't have to run as much pipe now?
Well, we had to look at the, the years too, because that was two years ago, three years ago when we looked at it originally. So there's some estimating as far as the, the numbers and the quantities kind of balanced out. But it is a little bit less just because of the volume of pipe it had to be put in, but.
Because I thought when we did this before, it was just about, just over a million dollars. So it's.
Seven, 750 or so in change, when I remember right, from when we did it the last time.
Okay.
We maybe did look at some at a million, Brian, now that you mentioned that.
I, I, I seem to recall this was just over a million to get this. But there again, that was because it was going further north too.
Correct, correct.
Now we split that, so Visto's has got their own improvement. And then this will be.
Visto's has, has a lift station involved in, installed for them, a force for them, and gravity sewer for them. So, yep.
Right. Yep. Okay. Otherwise, there wasn't anything unusual here, was there, Jim? I mean, it looks.
Pretty straightforward, pretty straightforward project.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any other questions on that?
So you need a motion to approve the preliminary engineering report?
Correct.
So I'll make that motion.
Brian makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, John, send a second. Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Passes. Okay, onto the last one. Jim, I assume that's you?
Yeah, the next step, the next resolution in the process is the directing the engineer to prepare plans and specifications.
Okay.
This is Dave, so moved.
Okay. Dave makes a motion. Get a second?
John, second.
Okay, John does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, Jim and Lucas, you got number. All right. Jim and Lucas, you got number fourteen as well.
I'll start this one, Lucas, if you want.
That'll work.
Okay. Well, the reason that you have this amended engineers' report in front of you is that the developer has chosen to bid this project as one single phase. The last time they presented this project, they wanted to do it in two separate phases. One was dirt work and lot grading and streets. And the second was underground utility storm sewer, water main and sanitary sewer. There was some confusion with the developers' agreement and some of the letter of credit requirements with that wording in the report. So this report combines them all back into one project. So there will be one project that constructs the water, the sewer, the all the underground utilities, does the lot grading, pond construction and street construction. So this just, there's a couple, I took out in the methods of construction area. I added in that it'll be now one phase of the direction of the developer and and that's all that changed. Yeah, I should say, and the costs were summarized into one project instead of two phases of a project.
Okay. Did that change the cost any, Jim, when you combined them all up like that?
It it does. It does a little bit. This is all going to be special assessed to that district right there. Right. A little bit more. There's some of the lot grading in that. And then here's our this is our estimate. So it it did change a little bit because of the there was one time there was going to be some private construction in this and that's that's gone. There is some storm sewer component to this project, and that's why the boundary is outside of the immediate area. It's another one of things like the sanitary sewer. It's it can take more than what the development is or it will. So it'll be like a tiered, a tiered assessment going out from the based on drainage area for sanitary or storm sewer.
The storm, the storm drainage would affect outside this area?
Yeah, because it's, we've got, this has got ponds run, three ponds. If you go to the next attachment, Brian, there's it shows you the overall scheme of the project.
This one?
Not the one that has, I think it's that one. I think it's B.
D?
B, 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 B.
Oh, this one. Oops.
Score, oh, maybe not. Should be the title fourteen or fourteen B. There you go. So you can see where it says phase one grading. Those are all ponds. And that will accept storm sewer from outside of this this improvement district.
This is one hundredth Avenue right here.
No, one hundredth Avenue is on your far right, where it says
Oh, here.
Yep.
Because this is the lower area for the whole area?
The whole area needs It all needs fill. This is all, this is in the floodplain. So this all gets low more filled out. The three ponds there are are kind of centrally located in the fill from the, or the excavation from those is going to be used for embankment on the site.
Yeah, that's right, because that's all on the floodplain, isn't it? That's right.
Correct.
That really doesn't I I guess I'm missing, because this is, is this, where's the ditch in here?
The ditch would be just right where your hand was.
Right here?
Yep.
So this is a chase into the, so the ditch would drain into these to fill these before drains? Because the water flows west here, right?
It's kind of a high point. It goes both ways. But, yeah. I believe, Lucas, that that boundary was already approved, correct?
That's correct.
So
Well, that's the only, the only thing I'm wondering is because of the boundary itself, I thought, well, we were talking about this from the from the sanitary, but because we've moved the background, I would, I was assuming the vast majority of this cost would be assessed to the development itself.
Correct, yep.
I didn't think there was anything that would be outside the development.
It could be, it was potential storm sewer.
Because it would drain these areas into that that drainage pond here?
Some of it.
These areas drain to the river.
Some of it, not all of it.
Hmm.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
I guess I do have a question. Have we approved this before with that size district? Because, I mean, we just stated that there potentially would be an impact to residents for sewer because of a regional lift station. But this is being done at the request of a developer with this in. Did we at the, at a previous point, just look at sewer water district just for this space? Or what, did we approve it at a bigger area in the past?
Or certainly the
Mr. Mayor, this is, this is Lucas. The boundary looks like it was that I'm looking at it right now on a previous document that was approved by the city and I and it is that that same boundary.
What is this box?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just surprised, because I thought the the vast majority of this cost, I mean, it still does. Or does any of the cost, well, it's storm
Well, and and Mr. Mayor, if I'm, if I may just add in here quick, that again is is up to the Special Assessment Commission and the city council. If you want it to be limited to the new development, that is certainly something that that you can limit later on when we go through the the special assessment process. And and you can say, you know, this was directed by this new development and therefore we think that there is no benefit to the outside properties. But if they are actually draining into the ponds and receiving a benefit, then there should be an assessment there. But again, that's on a later date. But just know that this boundary, as as you're seeing it now, is something that was discussed previously.
Right. And Jim, I think that's something we mentioned too. We could discuss that later then to see, you know, if we're drainage that way and to see if there's effect. Does it not, I'm kind of inclined to just stick with the undeveloped area here. But that's, that's down the road. We will need to look at that. That's something we need to look at.
Correct.
Okay.
Let's make sure it's at least noted in our minutes that we've stated that the focus of this should be for the new development.
Right.
And if there is something that somebody believes is a benefit to the other areas, we have to be very narrowly focused on what that is. Or is it even something that will make a a major impact to the developer? Let's push it that the development that's trying to request this takes it on.
Correct. And I'm thinking that's where Jim's going to come in and have to let us know which what we're talking about for drainage flow and where we're going with this stuff.
Yep.
So, okay. All right. Anything else, guys? Any other questions on this one? Otherwise, I guess, I don't know who's got the first one. Who's got a?
So, Mr. Mayor, that that first one is just a a resolution approving the amended engineering report.
Okay. And we just went over that. So can I get a motion from someone?
So moved.
Oh, go ahead, Dave.
Dave got it. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, John does a second. All right. So all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Motion carries. All right. Next one.
So, Mr. Mayor, the next one is just, again, the resolution approving plans and specs. These are, the engineer has already directed to prepare the plans and specs. So this is now just a resolution to approve those plans and specs.
As you'll see there, there's a proposed schedule for the project and then that scope of worksheet. The plans and specs are very large, so I didn't include the whole thing for your perusal.
I just have a question for you, Jim, is with all the things, activities going on and things that are happening, have you heard of any? I mean, all this type of work continuing, do you feel that you'll be better, get better numbers than expected? Or what you're referencing, anything like that related to the way business is operating right now?
Well, one of the cities that we do work for opened bids last week and they ended up rejecting. They have some uncertainty with their prairie dog funds. They have some uncertainty with some of the other funds that were coming to them. I've talked to contractors about this and they're all still trying to keep going with businesses normal. So this project is a special assessment project. It's not, I don't believe that you have any funds in there from another source. So and the developer has indicated he wants to keep moving forward with it. So I don't see anything adverse with a project like this.
Okay. All right. So then I'm looking for a motion.
I need a motion to approve the revised funds specs.
Okay, Brian makes a motion. Get a second?
I'll second that, Dave.
Yep.
And, Mr. Mayor, just to, just to clarify, it's just a resolution approving the plans and specs. Not revised plans and specs.
Right.
Well, it won't, right.
Okay. All right. So Brian made a motion, Dave did a second. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Unanimous, so motion carries. Okay, the resolution authorizing the auditor to advertise for bids. So we're good to go there, Jim? Everything's ready to just start putting out and
Yep.
Okay. All right. So I need a motion, someone.
So moved. John.
This is Brian, second.
Okay. Brian, second. All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Motion carries. All right. So the last one here, Lucas, do you want to explain this one a little bit more?
Yep, absolutely. And and so just so everyone's aware, the council and you, Mr. Mayor, had a phone call with Doherty today to discuss bonding for five projects in the city. Forest, three developments and and two other projects, eighty first, and then that that sewer line that's going south by one hundredth that we just discussed. So we did have a conversation with them about that today. So so just you are aware, the the bonding process has been triggered for the city. And those are the five projects that the city is working on at this time. So you are all aware, the the hope is to have funds available in June. And that that works really well with our timing from an engineering and legal standpoint on on these various projects. So we're not running into any issues like we, like we have in the past. So this this document now, this declaration of official intent, this is basically an IRS requirement for these improvement district projects. And and what it does is it's saying that the city will be expending funds out of its its gen- general revenue to pay for these initial startup costs before this project has bond funds that are available. And so what that is saying is that the city is using those funds, but it will pay itself back once it gets the temporary bond funds and then the permanent financing at a later date, once the projects are constructed. And so what this declaration of official intent does, it it says that it's doing that. And then it also puts a limit on the amount of money that the city can actually spend for this project. And that's twenty percent, typically twenty percent of the the engineer's estimate. So you'll see for this project, it's the maximum principal amount of the bond is eight million, six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars. So that's, that's basically the, the purpose of this is is an IRS requirement. But the intent of it is, you know, you're going to be spending money and and you're just saying that you'll pay yourself back with the bond funds.
Okay. Sounds good. Anybody got any questions on that? We've done this before, so. All right. With that
Motion to approve the declaration of intent.
Yeah.
Second.
Brian does a motion, Chelsea does a second. Okay. Lucas, do I need to roll call this one?
Uh, yeah, that'd be probably bad.
All right. So Brian?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Okay. All right. We'll just go right along to fifteen then, whoever wants to pick it up first.
Uh, two thousand, improvement district two thousand twenty dash four is Lost River Fifth Edition. As you see here, I took the scope of worksheet out of the lower engineering plans. These plans have been reviewed by myself and public works comments were sent to lower engineering. And this last set incorporates those changes into their plans. There's the one you need, Brian, right there. Yep. That talks about our project schedule. Appears to be about the same as, well, I shouldn't say appears to, it is the same as the sanitary sewer force main project. Take that back, I'm sorry, the Maple Lakes Edition project. This is a scope work. There are two components. There's the red section, which is discharged into the Cheyenne diversion project. And then there's the blue, which is the improvements to the Lost River Fifth Edition. So the pond in the middle there is already existing and the currently that pond drains out to is pumped to discharge into the Wall Avenue ditch and then it gravity drains to the diversion. That will be changed now with the improvements. It will be forced into the diversion. So all the permits are in place with that. Brenton has sent in all of the stuff that the Water Resource District needed. We have our permits and we can move forward with it now. So this is a completely special assessed project to the Lost River first through fifth additions with the section there for storm sewer improvements. And it's a local improvements for Lost River Fifth Edition, the blue area. So water, sewer, streets, storms, uh, street lights, everything.
Okay.
Yep. One thing to note on these last two projects, Maple Lakes and Lost River, we are adding a sump pump connection off of the storm sewer that we are bringing out to the property with the ability of the homeowner or the building builder to tie in the sump pumps with the storm sewer system. Somewhere to put that water. We've had a lot of trouble with groundwater in the past. This is a way of getting that, getting it into piping and getting it into the storm sewer.
Good. That's the way to do it.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions on this, guys? Anything else you want to ask them? Okay.
We're cutting dry.
Yeah, it is. I mean, we've kind of gone over this before for this one, so we kind of know what's coming. Lucas, you got anything you want to add on this one?
Uh, no, I can just go through these resolutions if you like.
Go ahead, please.
Okay, so the the first one is the resolution approving the plans and specs. Pretty straightforward, what we've discussed for the previous two developments.
So moved.
That motion, John.
Okay, John made a motion. Who had a second?
Dave will second it.
Okay. All right. John made a motion, Dave did a second. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, next one.
The next one, Mr. Mayor, is just a resolution authorizing the auditor to advertise for bids for this project. And again, this is roped in with the other four projects for bonding for twenty twenty.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the directing the auditor to advertise for bids.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, good second.
Second.
Chelsea does a second. All right. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that's unanimous. All right, on the
And the last, the last one for this, Mr. Mayor, is the declaration of official intent. So again, an IRS requirement, you're going to receive bond funds, just saying that the city will pay itself back once it receives those proceeds. The maximum principal amount of bonds expected to be issued for this project is eight million, two hundred and forty four thousand dollars, which is twenty percent higher than the engineer's estimate.
Yeah, okay.
Motion to approve the declaration for intent.
Okay, Brian makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
John does a second. Okay, I'll roll call it. John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
There we go. Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. And then motion carries. So let's move on to number sixteen then, whoever wants to pick up the first one there.
Item number sixteen, Mr. Mayor and Council, is the water sewer storm and street improvement district number twenty twenty dash two. This is what was originally eighty first Avenue. This is the street south of the new high school, north of what is the Lakeview Edition. This is a street project with water and sewer, storm sewer. The storm sewer will go into a pond that we constructed last year on Lakeview Drive. And this, the one part, if you go to the next page, Brian, that is of of interest is if you could go down and That is of of interest is if you could go down and then go into that corner. We are working with the with the school. And Brenton is going to be working with the church, so we can get a little connection road through the what used to be the, nope, to the up to the north that.
Right dish one.
Yep, that north-south connection there. The school is going to purchase some of that right of way and Brian Smith has purchased the other part of it, so. We're going to work with those two entities and get a road connecting Lakeview Drive down to the Lakeview Edition and sixty third. Eighty, it's now eighty second Avenue after the name change, so.
So the school, the school was able to negotiate a sale price of an acceptable sale price for that railroad?
They are very optimistic. Last I talked to Mark Lemura was that this coronavirus might have slowed it down a little bit, but. They had a paperwork moving from one entity to the other and back, so he was pretty optimistic about that, so. That's good. And you'll see this area that didn't scan real well, this was a big drawing was. In that oval area, that's a lot of athletic amenities. You can kind of make out the track and the football field, but there are athletic amenities down in that part of the world too, so. That high school site is going to be very impressive when it's done. It'll be. So this is, like I said, this project is creating, building that street. And bringing the water along in the storm sewer and the sanitary sewer, so. Sanitary sewer will flow directly to the SSL for as far as we can, and then there is going to be another lift station for Lakeview Drive as part of that project. Not part of this, this is just the main along, main along the road, so.
Okay. Alright, anybody else got any questions on this? Yeah, I hope they can get that railroad right away thing squared away, and that's just been an ongoing. Ever issue, but hopefully they'll get that done.
Well, he seemed very optimistic about it and since the developer to the south was able to do it there.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping that they can just just get that done.
Yeah.
So. Okay, any other questions on the A part here? Otherwise I'm going to accept a motion.
So moved. Dave, so moved.
Dave got that one, who's going to do second?
Second.
Alright, John got second. Okay, so all in favor say aye.
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 Alright, that's unanimous, so we'll move on to B. Authorizing for bids, anything different there, Lucas?
No, sir.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to direct the auditor to advertise for bids.
Okay, Brian makes a motion, you have a second?
Second.
Chelsea does a second, alright. Okay, so all in favor say aye.
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 Alright, passes unanimous. Okay, direct declaration of official intent, I'm thinking that's still the same verbiage as. Lucas, unless there's anything else.
Yes, sir, hasn't changed. The maximum principal amount of bonds for this project is two million, five hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars, which again, twenty percent higher than the engineer's estimate.
Okay. Alright, so. Except the motion from someone.
Motion to approve the declaration of intent.
Okay.
Second.
Dave's.
Brian got it, second. Okay, I'll roll call this one, guys. Brian?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Alright, we got through that, seventeen here, Brenton or Becky, which either one of you two want to pick this one up?
Yeah, I think we're going to kind of tag team this one, but we'll have Becky elaborate. Really what we have in the past, we've operated modified cash basis for accounting, or at least that's what we've. Stated that we have been, and it really hasn't been followed too strongly. So what we're proposing, Becky has been working with Ida Bailey. To make sure that we're. Going the right path. So for general fund accounting, what we're proposing is really to have a policy that states. This is the approach that we'd be taking, it would be modified accrual basis. And then for enterprise funds, or you see, like your utilities, that would be accrual based accounting. Except Becky could best explain the differences between the two. But I just want to highlight that for you, but by having a policy, I think it'd be a good stance, one, so you're aware. Of how we're doing, how we're going to be doing accounting, it does change up. When and where funds are reflected, especially towards the end of the year. But so you're aware, and then it's something that just shows, we're able to show to different groups like when they're doing our audit. This is the approach we're taking, this is the city's stance, and then even with like the state, so. When we're dealing with different funding like SRF, this is just another step we could take to be able to show them. What we're doing and how we're trying to clean up the different finances from the city. So Becky, do you have anything else to elaborate or add to it?
No, it's just the previous basis of accounting. In the audit reports was cash, and that's what I saw was happening, and that is not generally acceptable. So we are moving towards more of a. Acceptable to get a clean audit to an acceptable approach.
So one question I have is, since we're doing this mid-year, is there something that we need to do from an. Audit or from closing out a set of books from a fiscal period before we move into the next fiscal period because we're changing method?
No, we're going to change method as of twelve thirty one nineteen, so that our ending year of twenty nineteen is correct. And I've been in conversation with Ida Bailey that we may or may not apply it to eighteen. That will kind of be an ongoing question as we go through the audit.
Okay, so effectively this, assuming we approve this, it will be effective January one of twenty twenty?
Well, no, you're ending twelve thirty one, twenty nineteen.
It would cover fiscal year twenty nineteen, and then we apply it to this current year also and then on.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so right now it would apply to fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty going forward?
Yep.
Okay.
And Becky, like she mentioned, is looking at, you know, working with Ida Bailey to see if we can apply for eighteen. If we're able to go back and clean up eighteen based on that, then what we're doing is getting the two audit years, eighteen nineteen. Both with reflecting that approach, otherwise we're going to just have twenty nineteen reflecting this approach.
So does this change anything in terms of our financial position at either the end of twenty nineteen or twenty eighteen?
We already made the adjustments in twenty nineteen, just last week. And it wasn't a huge dollar amount, we just had to make some changes to our, like we accrued things like wages that happened in nineteen that were paid out in twenty twenty. As well as some expenses.
So if I did. Applying applying those expenses to different fiscal periods.
Correct, and that's, I just did that, yep.
Okay.
And you'll you'll see how that kind of. Hits us with our next agenda item.
Then, one question for us to be able to compare this fiscal, I mean, twenty nineteen to even further back fiscal periods, it. It is a bit of changing, you know, changing the way that we're reporting, so it's going to be hard for us, at least in the short term, to compare. To past financial reports, correct?
Yes, because it wouldn't be in different basis, but I don't. I don't want to say too much, but the previous years aren't. Are, we're just going to have cleaner stuff going forward, so I think going, we're creating a better path going forward.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely, this makes perfect sense. I mean, it's been frustrating that we've been dealing with this for this long.
Yep, no, I agree. And Becky, I appreciate all the effort you put into getting this, getting us here, because this has been a monumental task, and I know that. But this is going to really look good with the SRF folks that we've been having to deal with here for the last year and a half, and. I think this will get everything back on track again, so that's good.
And and working on cleaning up the audit and getting us back in graces with the North Dakota Public Finance.
Yep, exactly, so. So, no, thank you, we're doing that. So.
So. Oh, go ahead, I was just going to mention what we need for motions, and I do see a typo on the second one, so I'll clarify that in a minute. But I did separate these out since they're two different. Accounting methods, so the first one would be for the governmental funds, like general fund, for example, would be modified accrual basis, so we're looking for that. Approval, that would be one motion, and then the next one will be, if you just take modify, it would just be, remove that, it would be accrual basis. And it would be for. Air price funds, yep.
Okay, so somebody wants to make the first one there?
Yeah, just if you read them, actually they're correct, so I apologize, I was looking too deep into it. Those recommendations are correct.
Yeah, I'll make that motion to change the counting method. Modified accrual basis.
Okay.
John's second.
John does a second, alright. All in favor of that one, say aye.
Right.
Aye.
That was unanimous, so.
Motion for approving the policy going forward.
Okay.
Modified accrual basis.
Brian makes a motion.
John's second.
John, okay. Okay, so all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so motion carry, both of them carry, alright, good. Glad we, you move on now, get our accounting where we wanted it to be, so awesome. Alright, so we're on eighteen.
Eighteen?
Yep. We're on, you're on the right one, Brian. Okay, this is going to be another one Becky and I could tackle together. If you have any questions of detail, Becky could probably highlight it more specific. If you look into what we're looking at is fiscal year twenty nineteen budget amendment, this would be budget amendment number two. This amendment is used typically to close out the year, make sure we're saying in good graces, and if we had any adjustments that happened towards the very, very end of the year, last couple of months. What you see highlighted in yellow, Becky highlighted changes, so amendment two, which would be the column J. If you scroll down, Brian, for revenues, the only thing that was adjusted was just miscellaneous, the twenty one thousand, so not much has changed, but we do need amendment to reflect that. If you go to the next tab, the expenditures, this is where we really have some. Some changes, some differences. We've had a few different expenses that hit. The professional services and the general fund that we didn't have before, we thought they were going to get paid back. One was. For a development called Avelia Acres. There was a forty thousand dollar cash and lieu that was paid to the park board in city, is kind of like the fiscal agent, we pass it on to the park board. Well, that development was rescinded, the plot was rescinded, so the forty thousand was refunded. The park board did not have the abilities to. Refund that money because they were having financial problems with like Prairie View, for example, and also. To say deferred their loan for the shed building at Freed Park. Maple Lakes was on track to occur. Towards the fall last year. And we were expecting to get that forty thousand, that didn't happen then to last year, so. That's, that's why we have some shortage there. In addition, we had almost seventy thousand dollars in engineering expenses that were higher than what was, seventy thousand higher than what was budgeted. And then the other, one of the other.
Can you maybe stop streaming that? No, I'm not, for, just give me a half an hour, then I'll be done. I don't know if it's us or if it's something else, but my thing's not going as well.
Dave, we can hear you.
Dave, we can hear you. And then, the last thing I had is, or a couple more things, as we had for the middle school inspections with more engineering. And for their backup building inspections, that was a little higher than we expected, we originally budgeted, I believe, seventy five thousand. And it was, it came in at ninety three thousand. And then the last one is we account for street bonds differently. Last year, towards the end of the year, we started calling for street bonds differently. Becky could explain that one, but that was about fourteen thousand dollar difference, so. Overall impact. You know, some of those expenses were already in there, but we did have some changes to our general fund because of those different activities, so. I'm giving you a little more in depth than what. You typically would see there, but if you had questions about it, and then Becky, can you highlight just the street bonds really quick for them?
Sure, we have the. The builder do a thousand dollars per street or per home for a street bond deposit. And if there isn't any damage to the street bond, they can get that thousand dollars back. And in the past. We would receive the thousand dollars, we would record it as revenue, and anytime we would return a street bond, we would record it as expense. But the correct procedure is to have it hit a liability account, and it sits there until we pay it back, or if. There's damage, we take it out and we use that money to repair. So going forward, it should not hit as revenue or expense, it should be just stay as a liability on the balance sheet.
Okay. Any questions for the general fund amendments, so revenue or expenditures? No, okay, we go to the next one there, Becky, or Brian? Next one is solid waste. Is your call, we, previous council meeting increased the solid waste fee from twenty one fifty to twenty four dollars per month. That's a combined amount for trash and recycling. We had different areas, some changes there, waste management had a rate increase. And then covering cost or composting like that, that was the drive for that rate increase. However, the solid waste fund was. Running into the negative last, ran into the negative last year, so we're calling for a general fund transfer. And we had to update our expenditures, total expenditure, so if you scroll down. Excuse me. That just shows the two seventy for general fund expenditures, so. Yeah, this more of a cleaning up one, we already budgeted for the, in the amendment one for the transfer funds, but this just as a final cleanup on that one. And then the last one we had is the sales tax server tab. What we have in here is. When we're doing accounting, like with grants, for example. We got a partners and marketing grant through the state North Dakota Department of Commerce. That partners and marketing grant comes in, it was for, I believe, twenty four thousand, five hundred dollars. So that's a revenue that comes into the city, but we have to count that revenue in our budget, but then we also have to account for the expenditures down below. We're not able to just offset within the expenditures. Line item, a grant coming in and expended right away. So that's some of the activity going on. Also, Stanley Township put ten thousand dollars towards Wall Avenue. And the city put in, you know, covered the rest for that project. It was roughly a thirty thousand dollar project, so you covered twenty, Stanley did ten. What we have in here to have the highway fund balance out, we also reflected the different street improvements that we had. Last year into the sales tax fund, one because sales tax fund has quite a few funds available. So that seventy two thousand dollars is highlighted, that's infrastructure. That would be the state's contribution towards Wall Avenue, and then improvements at third and fourth, those are the primary. Expenses tied to that. And then also special projects that falls into the economic development, so the state's contributions for. The Christmas lights and the banners, we view that as part of economic push. Economic development gets the, really. Kind of spurs the community, and we definitely did spur the community on that one, of getting them interested in. Embracing the community more, so those were received very well, but we included those under the sales tax rev, or fund. So with this amendment. Are there any questions with that, or Becky, did I miss anything?
Oh, no.
Anthony, do you have any other questions? About it? Okay. Okay, otherwise I want to ask for a motion to accept.
I'm moved.
Chelsea?
Second.
John does a second. Okay. Got to roll call this one, guys, so John?
Yes.
Dave? Probably on mute. Okay, Chelsea? Okay, Chelsea?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Alright, motion passes.
I think Dave might have had to drop off for a little bit. I think that's might have been what he was saying.
That's fine. Um. Alright, so utility fees, Brent, you got this one?
Have a document?
Nope, I don't have one for you. Um, what I have, what I do have for discussion, and if you guys want to take action on this is, uh, what we wanted to do is bring forth all the final changes in one rate resolution, um, for the utilities. We just do it all at once. However, uh, the sewer fund, we're going to need to implement a rate sooner than later. We can't wait for water. Um, we've talked about each of these different utility funds. Like I said, we've hashed out solid waste. That one is already approved and updated, uh, by resolution. Uh, for vector, we've discussed that one quite a bit. Vector is the proposal would go from one dollar to two fifty per month. Um, that would be so we could up our, uh, efforts to improve mosquito control. Uh, there weren't any issues or concerns really brought with that, uh, that was received fairly well by council and community. Um, but like I said, sewer, uh, we're going to be sending sewage to Fargo. The cost for us to send sewage to Fargo is three dollars per thousand gallons right now. And our rate is, I believe, a dollar seventy five? Or dollar eighty five, I'm just double checking my sheet here. A dollar seventy five per thousand gallons. Uh, you pretty easily do the math that three dollars, a lot more in dollar seventy five. So we need to do something at least to balance that out. Uh, so we want, we need to at least be able to cover our costs. Uh, not all sewage would be going to Fargo, but, uh, we need to still be able to cover our costs for operations, maintenance, anything like that. So, uh, the two suggested or recommended changes that we have for fees would be sewer, three dollars and vector two fifty. Water, uh, casserole is working up a proposal of how we could handle, how they could handle water with the city of horse. Uh, I would expect something end of April, early May. And that, once we get that, then we'll be able to go through and develop some rates. Or identify what the rates would be to go to casserole. Uh, we've been looking at our options with Fargo also. But if we were to go to Fargo for water, uh, we'd likely be, if we were to go with Fargo water, we would likely be paying casserole or working directly through casserole anyways, uh, because we'd have, that line would have to go through casserole service area. Uh, so we're looking at our options heavily at casserole. We're still in discussions with Fargo, but nothing has changed with Fargo discussions. So. Uh, any questions on the utility rates?
So Brent, with the upping in the vector fee, does that give us more ability to do aerial spraying? I'm assuming.
It does, uh, we wouldn't do aerial unless it was absolute last resort. The reason why is because where we have most mosquito problems is along the river, obviously. Aerial spray will come, the tree canopy is going to have quite of impact on our aerial spraying if we were to do it. Um, what I would do is we have in our back pocket if we were to use it. But we would do, we do use, uh, truck based spraying. We could expand into, uh, you know, staff having like a backpack sprayers or on a U T V or something like that. Those would probably be fairly effective compared to the aerial, uh, especially when you're looking at the cost. An aerial spray right now will cost us about eight thousand dollars per application. And our costs right now are truck based are a couple hundred dollars per application. So there's a big difference in cost there. Uh, but also our trap counts are typically a lot lower. Last year we were, uh, lower than any other areas throughout the metro, uh, Fargo, West Fargo, Morehead, uh, they all had trap counts succeeding what we did last year. Where previous years we were high. So we did a very good job of, compared to the previous years of knocking that down. Um, but this would give us some funding to have in our back pocket. Long answer, yes, it would give us the ability to do it. Not necessarily that we would every time. So, and on a full year at two fifty would give us one to two applications per year. So, yeah.
Well, obviously you have, we have no idea what the year is going to bring, so.
Yep.
Hard part to it.
And there again, because it's a resolution, if we find that, you know, we, we end up deciding not to use it, we can adjust the rate as needed.
Yeah.
But it ge, it gives us the flexibility to have some vector funds to apply as needed.
Yeah, and also what we're doing is trying to have our costs tied to vector and like Cast County Vector Control hitting that vector fund, not general fund, paying for it all the time. That way we're able to truly break out our costs tied to it.
Okay. Alright, anybody else got any questions or comments you want to make on that? We've kind of been over this number of times, unfortunately.
It happens. So the only question, the only last question is effective date. When, when were you thinking of effective date? Because there needs to be communication out to residents.
Yep, yep. The sooner the better, but I'm going to suggest is where your comfort is. For the, um, solid ways, council asks that that comes effective June first. We could still do these June first. If you want to do them sooner, we can do them sooner. Uh, if you were to do anything, I would say the sewer definitely so, sooner if you were going to bring anything sooner.
Well, I, I would suggest we keep, keep it the same so for communication versus giving residents more time to, you know, if there's, if there's feedback or anything that needs to be considered then. So I, I would suggest we make them all the same day, affect June first.
Yeah, that way there's not the confusion. It's all going to happen at the same time.
Right.
So Mr. Mayor, this is Lucas. I would just say that, you know, if you're going to, uh, amend these rates, that you do have a resolution that indicates what's being, um, amended and then the effective date in that resolution. And that's, that's what we've done for, for past, um, resolutions amending the fee ordinance or the, the fee schedule.
Yes.
Okay. So do, do you want us to approve this now or do you want us to wait for the resolution?
His, historically, we've updated the resolution. Um, you know, after council's taken action, we'll update that resolution and then have it signed by the mayor. We, we just have to know that it would be approved by resolution.
So my guess is, uh, we're still going to have to, you said approve it, so somebody will have to make a motion, second it.
I'll make a motion to approve the changes to the, the utility rates as noted.
I'll second.
And then what, what, what's the effective date for that?
Oh, effective June first.
Okay, John, did you do a second on that?
Yes.
Got it, okay. Alright, so all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Yeah, alright, so June one, we'll have to get starting information out to the folks so they know what's coming.
Will this, is there enough time to get this in the, the current horse happenings?
We will do our best to make it work.
Okay.
So we will get communication out. So.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, the next item here is the over dimension vehicle policy. Um, this is a follow up from our last regular council meeting. We're talking about overweight vehicles. Uh, and we mentioned that we'd be following the city of West Fargo's policy. This is pretty much the same policy that they have. Uh, the appeal of doing so makes it to where we're consistent with West Fargo, uh, when it comes to their policy, um, and contractors working with city of horse or West Fargo. So they're familiar with it. They should be a little more knowledgeable of it. Uh, this does address overall length, it does address vehicle weights, it has a proposed, uh, fee structure. Uh, it does also have the weighted roads with restrictions tied to it. Um, with the season, you know, when we have a road restrictions kicking in, like right now would be the spring. Uh, the road with, uh, Wall Avenue within the city limits are eighty eighth and sixty fourth. Our primary roads are being addressed with this. Uh, what they would have to do is follow, uh, six ton road weight restriction. When there's no restrictions in place, those would be identified, I believe, as a seven and a half ton. And Jim could elaborate if I'm missing anything on that, but I believe that's what we had in there. If you scroll a little farther down, Brian. Appendix A, next one there, yep. That is a copy of, uh, the map for roads. Uh, what you'd see are the different weight roads. So like a red is a six ton. We've also reflected the roads in red that are county roads. So ours are, like I said, Wall Avenue and then, um, sixty fourth. There's a little portion of seventy six east of the middle school. That red section, that's technically city right now too, uh, but other than that, it's, uh, it said everything is pretty much county.
Well, this is County Road six though as well, right?
Yep, yep. So that's County Road. So the county enforced it, but they have weight restrictions there.
Also, thi, this is what, this is the weight restriction that they have on that section of County Road six.
Yeah. Yeah. So if you scroll a little farther down, this gets into all the fun math. And this is all, uh, like I said, from city of West Fargo, that we were consistent with them. A little farther down, it gets into the fee schedule and it gives you examples such as somebody was, had a vehicle overweight. Um, that's how it'd be if, how, so much of a fee they would have.
So the question is, how was this enforced?
Well, if this is approved by resolution, then is enforced by the, it could be enforced by the deputies. Once our municipal judge is in place, uh, we're looking, looking at having the municipal court in place here. Uh, probably this month, we're going to be meeting with onset Twitchell, city prosecutor side. I've been talking with their municipal judge for us. And Wendy and I have been working towards getting all the boxes checked for us being structured, so.
So the, the question.
We're pretty much there. We just have to have a meeting with city prosecutors and do our final check off.
What would be the process for requesting these permits? I mean, there must be some.
They would have to, they would have to. Yep, they, they would have to interact with the city. Uh, we, we would have a, I believe we'd have a form that they would fill out. And, um, it would be a permit application through the city, just like a building permit or anything like that.
Okay, so the, the intention is if, if the developer believes that they're going to have a vehicle that's going to be such and such weight, they need to apply for that permit ahead of time. And I guess that's.
Yep. And they typically.
Have the process in place to be able to print those permits to get to those drivers.
Yep, yeah, that's what we're establishing, getting their ducks in a row on that. Um, also, a lot of these folk, these companies, they, these truck drivers, everybody, they have to have these permits anyways through the county or the West Fargo, Fargo, um, even North Dakota DOT. So it's not a foreign concept to them. It's more just getting the word out to them that, hey, there's restrictions and there's permits in place that they're going to have to have. So.
Yeah, that's, it's going to be the communication element of this. How do we let people know that these are now in place?
Yeah.
It's going to be.
You know, FM Home Builders Association too, they can disseminate some of this information as well.
Yep.
Cause it's, it's really the contractors and the builders, right?
Primary, yep.
Yep. But this is our, you know, we're trying to save our streets a little bit here and, um, this is how other cities are handling it too, or how they handle it, like West Fargo, uh, and Fargo, they both have their own policies for these, so.
So the question is, is this going to, are, are we proposing that to put this in place?
If the council is to approve, Luke, Lucas, if I'm missing anything, they would need to approve this by resolution. And then, once the roads are signed, this can be enforced. Is that correct, Lucas?
Well, and you know, obviously as you indicated earlier, we need to get that municipal court set up first. Um, to get that going, because otherwise, I mean, if there are any violations of this, it, it's not going to go anywhere. If we don't have something in place to, uh, actually enforce the policy that the council would be approving tonight. Um, but I guess that, I mean, we could put an effective date in that resolution that says that it'll become effective, uh, once the municipal court is established and operating.
Okay.
I'm just thinking about the burden for applying to these permits and making sure that, you know, the vehicles or the builders have this permit ahead of time as well. Yeah, it's going to be interesting.
Go ahead and I would have to defer to, to, uh, the administrator on that as far as what's been set up. Uh, from a city administrative standpoint, as far as the, the permitting, who's going to be responsible for the policies and, and having the, I don't know what involvement the engineer has, uh, in this process or, or if this is something that Barrett or Keith would be, uh, working with um, individuals on to apply for permits and stuff.
Yep. That's an internal function for our staff that will be hashing out.
And the other, the other side of this is accounting for the funds would be managed and allocated to street projects through like the highway fund, right?
I, I believe they voted general fund and then general fund could put money towards the streets or where appropriate. Uh, this typically into the general, this typically goes to general fund, I believe.
Hmm.
But like I said, general fund could transfer funds to the highway fund as needed.
Cause I, I would think that we would use this as an annual repair, you know, fund for street projects and could see damage from these overweight vehicles.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I said, it's a follow up from our previous count, regular council meeting where staff was directed to get this policy, uh, together and to you. Um, like I said, we want to be as consistent as possible, uh, with our neighboring cities. So that's why we took a lot of what they had, or basically what they had, the principles of it. And then applied it to just specific streets that the city would have for enforcement of this. Um, the county roads, we don't have the enforcement of. So it, if somebody was to be driving with a permit or needed a permit, they would have to have one. Say they're a billion lost driver, for example, they would have to have a permit through the county. And then they would also have to have a permit through the city to be able to go on Wall Avenue.
Brent, did you run this past Lucas just for just clarity, double checking it, uh, making sure?
We, we've done just general concept of it, but not the, not having them proof every single detail of it, so.
Yeah.
But, and so this was the same.
Yeah.
As our neighbor, so.
Lucas, did you want to, I mean, if we approve this, should we approve it with you just taking a quick peek through it and making sure it's alright? I'm just saying.
Yeah, so I would, I would appreciate that authorization to actually go ahead and take a look at this and, and see if there's any, any concerns that I have. I just, it'd be good for me to have an understanding of what's all involved with it. Because, uh, as Brent indicated, uh, this will have an impact on prosecutions for the cities. I just want to make sure that, uh, we're all on the same page, uh, with this policy and, and the city's enforcement of the policy.
Yeah, that was, kind of what I was thinking is the enforcement element. I would assume that there's some ordinance changes that would be needed for this as well, right?
Well, it ties back, we have fairly general ordinance, so.
Uh, and so the city's ordinances right now refer to, uh, state centric code.
Okay.
Uh, in the road regulation. So yes, that is, that is true that there might be some contradictory elements of this policy with the centric code, but I'm not, I'm not sure. Um, as Brent just indicated, that the city's ordinances are, uh, pretty broad, but they're using the, the century code. So I'll, I'll make sure of that as well.
Yep.
If I may suggest with hearing that from Lucas, uh, let's not take any action and let's let him take a look at it and bring this back to us. I, I don't see, is there a need to push this that hard?
Brent, I guess I'll defer that to you.
Yeah, basically what it does right now is it. Uh, if you don't, if we don't have any approval of like this policy. It makes it a lot more difficult for enforcement of the ways, I don't know how, Lucas, how they would handle. Uh, if there was an overweight vehicle. I mean, we have a temporary, we have a Band-Aid approach right now for overweight vehicle. Drives Wall Avenue. Once we have the signs, uh, my understanding is they've been ordered or we've, I've asked their public work staff to get those ordered, so we get them placed, but. Once it's signed, a vehicle could be stopped for being overweight, but then it gets into. What would be a fine structure or anything like that. Uh, the enforcement, I think, would be a little difficult and Lucas could expand on that part. That's, I think you're going to be a hiccup.
Yeah. So, well, as it sits right now, uh, at your last meeting, the, the city council approved those, uh, the emergency um. Restrictions on, on a couple of roads in the city. So if someone does violate, once those signs are placed, that's when it's effective. So if someone violates those restrictions right now, it would just be considered a, a general violation of the city's ordinances, which is a, a fine of a thousand dollars. Uh, each day that the, the violation continues, so uh, basically the violation right away would be up to a thousand dollars.
Yep. It'd be up to, there isn't to set them out.
Alright, so if we, I mean, could we approve it tonight contingent upon Lucas's approval? Would that be acceptable?
We've done things like, we've done those approaches before.
Correct.
Then we'll bring it back up.
Yep. Lucas, would that be okay with you?
I will defer to the council.
Of which you are. You're the legal counsel. Alright, what about the rest of you guys? Is that alright? We do that?
Give my opinion on it.
But either way, if you wanna table it, you can. If you wanna uh, get the policy in place, whatever one you'd prefer to do, so.
I'm guessing that we're probably close enough with those things so that if there'd be anything, it would be some minor changes and we can pick that up at the next meeting if needed.
And we're essentially proving this as a resolution anyway, correct?
Correct.
So. I mean, I think it's easy enough to change that. What'll be harder is making the ordinance changes if needed.
Yeah, that's.
I mean, in essence, if we put this in place, I, I'm more concerned about the, the process. Do, and you know, put this in place and expect developers and communicate itself, but.
Yep.
Putting it in place is a good first step and then we can, staff can, can start working towards making it real.
Right, it's up, gonna be a process, we know that. It's just something. We'll be able to get this communicated out sooner so that the contractors are aware of this, so that they're not being blindsided coming into town overweight.
Right, yep.
So. Alright, so if they, if somebody wanna do a motion to me accept this with the contingents of uh, Lucas taking a look through it?
I'm moved.
Okay.
I'll second that, Dave.
Okay. Alright, so on favor say aye.
Aye, aye.
Get, motion carries. Alright, Jim?
Alright, Mr. Mayor, we'll make it fairly quickly. Went through a lot of projects already. Things are gonna start ramping up here by the end of the month. I was told today by contractor that if it hadn't snowed seven inches, it may be within a couple of weeks. But it's looking like it'll be more like the end of the month now, so if we do not get any more precipitation, they might try to scratch around and do some more work. Tor- within a couple of weeks, but uh, the start will be more like that May. So. With that being said, I did receive a schedule today on our highly anticipated shared use path project. And their schedule, they provided. Shows them starting work on Monday, May fourth and finishing work on June third. And that is ahead of where we wanted them to be done, so there is a little bit of fluff in here, but I'm not, knock on wood. And uh, those funds have to be expended by uh, first week in July, so we should be, that, the provided schedule. Will meet our, our deadlines with the parking wreck department, so that is good.
Okay.
Um. Other than that, that's pretty much all that I have right now. We're gonna meet with the contractor on Cub Creek on Thursday to see what their schedule looks like when they can get out and do some more dirt work on that. And uh, we keep progressing with Southdale Farms and that one will be ready hopefully in two weeks for your approval and bidding on that one. And um. Let's see, what was the other one in that mix?
While you're looking there, Jim, I'm gonna just put in the queue there how we're sitting on the middle school.
And I, I'm gonna ask too, you, when is the high school started, starting, planning on starting, if you haven't said that?
Right, same timeframe, Dave. They're gonna be in that first week of May, that was.
Okay.
That was the latest that I had heard. I, I, they haven't had a meeting since, since their, or uh, initial meeting and that. Was still their plan. I, I haven't heard if it got pushed back because of the snow, so anyways, um. Why am I? Tried to plan ahead here. So, oh, the other one is the enforcement project. That'll, the plans for that will be before you in two weeks, so we can keep that one moving along too, so. Those are the ones that I had. I would like to remind everybody, if you have a sump pump within the city, discharge it outside. And a lot of phone calls for public works people today. And uh, the lift stations are getting inundated. They are having trouble pumping, so if you have a sump pump, please pump it outside, so. We'll work with uh, Brett and then to get that on the website as a reminder to everybody. Chestnut is always one of the problems and that's overloading lift stations two in one, so.
Yep.
I will have a study for you too, or a little analysis on the lift station number four at your next council meeting too. I just. Finished up some of the data today. I wasn't able to get it into your, get it to you for this meeting, but we'll have it for two weeks for sure. So.
Alright.
That's all I have.
And where we have with the middle school, are they still tracking or where we at?
No, they're behind.
Yep.
They are behind and the guidance that I've gotten or the, any. Discussions I've had with the school are that they are gonna bring more people online as soon as the weather allows.
Yeah.
Um. I don't know if that's happening or not. I get the daily, the updates, but they just generalize how far behind they are. Just behind is basically what they say.
I'm assuming they're adhering to all these, this COVID nineteen guidance uh, issues, correct?
Um.
I'm smirking.
I know. I haven't, I haven't personally observed anything that is not. Observing it.
Fair enough, I'll go with that. Alright, that's fine. I'm just trying to, you know, get an idea where we're at here, cause I know they've been behind and I'm assuming that that's probably still been an ongoing deal, so, alright.
So one, one thing has been indicated to me on the middle school is if they keep, if they have any further delays, it'll likely impact the school year. That's where they're at, to give you an idea time wise.
That's kinda what I mean.
Has it already been impacted?
Yeah, well.
The next.
More significantly.
Yes.
Well, I think they need to be realistic that they're probably already impacting next year's school year at that school.
Well, yeah, yep, I agree.
Yep.
I agree. So, alright, well, yeah, we'll just keep an eye on it and see where this goes, but I agree with you, Dave, this is probably gonna be impacted. No matter how much happy thoughts you have, there's gonna be impact here. So. Alright, so that it, Jim?
That is it, thank you.
Yep, alright, Brenton, what do you got?
Okay, uh, mentioning building inspections, couple of things, one tied to the middle school. Uh, we were in agreement with the city of West Fargo. We had more engineering originally doing inspections for that with. West Fargo creating their own building inspection department. Uh, we were going to have, we're having City of West Fargo do, carry out, finish out the middle school inspections. Um. They have indicated that their inspectors are not. Uh, due to some health concerns of their own, they're not come, and cause of the COVID stuff, they're not comfortable being on site doing inspections. And also not having the ability to do the inspections. So our building inspector, we have Keith and I are meeting with a third party firm called Midwest Inspections. Uh, later this week, I believe we're shooting for tomorrow. To knock out inspection for the school and then also get a proposal from him. Uh, or, so he has information, he can see where the school is at, proposal from to finish off the school, the middle school inspections. This was sprung on us last Friday afternoon. When about two o'clock and there was an inspection line at four o'clock, so we've had multiple conversations with the school district and West Fargo. Uh, trying to work out a solution and express our concerns of this last minute change. But give me a heads up, I will keep you posted as new information arises from it. Uh, my goal is to have a proposal for the remainder of the inspection services brought to council at the next meeting on the twentieth. Uh, also talking about building inspections. Uh, starting Wednesday, we're going to have open inspections back up. However, builders are going for, you know, your residential builds and commercial, but they're gonna have. More strict guidelines or rules they have to follow for inspections. Uh, builders, contractors, they're required, they're going to be required to give us a two day notice at a minimum. For any inspection request. Certificate occupancies will not be given out day of. A lot of times we'll have builders come to us day of asking for a certificate occupancy. It's not gonna happen day of, so we're telling them upfront. Um, also, the job site will have to be cleared. Uh, I believe we hit, we said one hour bef- at least one hour before the inspection is to occur. Uh, and if there's any concerns, health or safety wise with our staff. Or the job site isn't cleared, the inspection will not happen. So, uh, we're. Trying to, we're pushing that straightforward with uh, the Home Builders Association. We've talked this over with uh, Bryce Johnson, the director of HBA. Uh, and also Keith has been spreading the word out with the builders, but that's our approach for now. Obviously, if there are other changes to the environment or how COVID is handled. Uh, that may require us to make some adjustments again, but. Uh, we do have quite a few builders chomping at the bit to get foundations in and get started on their houses. And so with this, we're giving the ability to continue work, help keep the economy going, but. Also keeping in mind safety for our staff. So.
Yeah.
Um, we're working on filling our second building inspector position still. Um, so we are working on that one. And we are also working on a new public works, or on the public works position to fill that one. Uh, we had originally offered that one, I mentioned that, or the public works position to an individual, but he failed to perform the pre-employment testing requirements. Uh, so the position is back open. And then our third one was executive assistant and that one was filled and the individual started full time this week. They put in two half days in last week. Uh, her name's Roberta, and like I said, she'll be there to help out, keep things moving. Uh, hopefully we'll have agenda packets out sooner. Uh, she'll work on meeting minutes. And support role to myself and to the council on the items that they would have, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Alright. So in our portfolio reports, uh, just, uh, yeah, COVID nineteen, it's been an. Everybody knows about it, uh, but the only thing I can, some, some things that I've observed. Um, just make sure if everybody's kinda keeping an eye on each other, especially some of the older residents in town here, if you know somebody. You know, just keep an eye on them, give them a call or something like that if you know them, cause. Um, wanna make sure that they get, are getting supplies. That's kind of been a thing that the, the mayors have been hearing from residents. Some of them are. Some of the older ones are a little reluctant to go out and get supplies and they're trying to make do with things, so. If you know somebody is running some issues, help them out or. You know, let them know that, like even if at Casey's now, they've got a deal where uh, in the morning hours, I think we've got that post in our Facebook feed that they're. Um, will help out whoever are more vulnerable or elderly residents get supplies. They're, they're keeping a few more. Uh, things in the store there to help them out, so they don't have to drive into town. So just gotta keep that in mind, keep an eye on each other. Um, one thing that's getting brought up, I got a bunch of phone calls on, is kids playing in the playground. Um, folks not wiping down the playground equipment. I know Doug Burgum is, wants to keep all the playgrounds open. I get that too. Um, so I'm just gonna throw out the cautionary tale. Those germs can survive on surfaces for quite a long time, but if your kids are gonna go out and play on the, on the playground equipment. Bring along some wipes, try and help us out, we can keep this thing from spreading. Um. Yeah, and I was just gonna say too, I'm gonna back up what Jim said. You guys got your sump pumps going down the, into the sewer system? Push them outside now. You gotta do that, otherwise you guys are gonna overwhelm our uh, lift stations, which is not a good thing at all. So just try and get that done here as soon as possible, like in the next twenty-four hours, please. Um, other than that, I was just gonna mention, everybody pay attention to our Facebook site, the city site. We're gonna try and get as much updates and things out there as we possibly can. Um, and I, the other thing I'll throw out there at the same time is that if you know somebody, you think uh, might need some help. Uh, call the city, let us know, we can see what we can do. You know, helping out, making sure everybody's taken care of in town here. It's kinda what we need to do now, so. Um, I guess that's probably that, just everybody stay safe, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at here, so play it safe and uh, we'll get through this thing, so. With that, I'll pass it on to John, what do you got?
No report tonight.
Yep. Alright, I'll move it on to Dave, what do you got?
No report tonight either.
Okay. Chelsea?
Nothing.
How's the Horace Happening is coming, by the way? Just where are we at with that?
Yeah, um, I think we're on track to get it out on time. We had a lot of changes, you know.
Yep.
Not gonna have the garage sale all weekend, obviously, and the cleanup week has changed and. You know, some, some different changes to the magazine this, this time around, so hopefully we can get it out on time.
Okay, no, that's what I was wondering, cause I know a bunch of stuff got changed, so it's just like, well, I thought I'd ask and see how you guys were doing on that one, cause. Yeah, it might change again tomorrow with some other stuff, I hope not, but.
Yeah.
Alright.
Yep.
Brian, you got anything?
Yep, two, two quick things. Uh, number one, I think after we get done with this meeting, if you guys have any feedback on using Zoom. Um, I, just as an FYI, we've been hearing reports from other municipalities that are actually demanding to not use Zoom. Uh, because of some of the security issues that have been raised, uh, because of the adoption. Uh, so many municipalities have been using Zoom and there's, uh, they're trying to actively uh, push updates and, and security. Uh, uh, updates to, to reduce some of the exposure, but. Um, just some thoughts to, to consider, something we didn't really know about until uh, after this adoption where we set up this meeting, so. Uh, we'll, we'll continue to evaluate. Uh, the other thing I wanted to just raise for fairness, uh, if you're not aware, uh, nextdoor.com is a. Essentially a social media uh, platform for neighborhoods and, and uh, areas to communicate. Um, there are multiple, I think there's seven neighborhoods in Horace already that have uh, next door. Areas set up where residents, I think there's around uh, five hundred people in town that have a next door account, so. Uh, Horace has been set up now as a, what they call it, agency, which is like a, a city entity. So we have the ability now to communicate to all the people that are on Nextdoor. So that they can push updates, uh, and actually one thing that came out of that, uh, the census, uh, North Dakota sense or US Census. Has been publishing on Nextdoor and according to the US Census numbers. Horace actually has, uh, uh, last time I checked, uh, which was this weekend, had just over about fifty-two percent response rate so far. Uh, for the city of Horace, so which is actually quite good. Uh, we obviously wanna shoot for a hundred percent, but uh, they're continually pushing updates and requesting residents to. To visit the, the census up page to, to go complete that form. So that's it for me.
And, yep, everybody should do the census form. We all have time now to do it, so let's get that done. Alright.
Corey, I do have two more items.
Go ahead.
Uh, one is for feedback from, looking for feedback from council. One is for feedback from, looking for feedback from council of, if you would like to, if we should still be having planning commission meetings, they would have public hearings, different things going on like that, we wanted to test out how this is working for council, before saying one way or another, but looking for feedback from council, if you guys would like to have planning commission continue, continue, or stop, do the COVID stuff, or what your thoughts are.
And I kind of mentioned with Russ, we were gonna do a test run, obviously, tonight, see how this all worked out, I think what their biggest concern is obviously being able to look at the plaits and things like that, are they gonna, on their, on their computers? Which, I would assume if they're gonna be able to do it, it's just gonna be a little different format, so it's gonna be, everybody's gonna be learning a new, new way of doing it.
Yeah.
I think the biggest thing would make sure you have a clear-cut moderator that is managing all the materials, and you'll have to make sure all the materials are there, and you'll have to make sure, you know, you've been sending them out ahead of time, that type of stuff, which I think has been done, so as long as you're doing those types of things. And the attendees got in, attendees can put in the chat window, they can put in, you know, Q and A, that should be, you know, a lot to keep that moving.
Okay. Okay, I think that's good feedback for us there. Last thing I had, something probably of interest to most of you, is deadline for petitions was today for running for office. Didn't have very many petitions, mayor, the only petition was Corey Peterson. Council, the two petitions, they fell on Brian Schmidt, then park board. I have Wade Frank, Shannon Kiss, and then Jason Olson, and then for municipal judge, it would be Jessica Shuminsky, so. Just giving you a quick heads up, but those are the petitions that were received.
Question about the municipal judge, just because there was a reference in our, in our chat. Just to clarify, that is not a full-time position, right, that is a very part-time position, it allows us to be able to deal with tickets that are occurring in our city without a municipal judge would not have the ability to levy fines, those types of things, because no other area of the state or county is taking these for us, is that correct?
That is correct, and it is appointed position until it's elected, and then once it's elected, then it could go on, the municipal, municipal judge is one position where they do not have to live within the city limits, but after the city gets to a population of 5,000 or more, they have to have, I believe, a license to practice law in, say, North Dakota, Lucas, is that correct? I'd just like to defer and make sure.
Yeah, that's correct, and just so everyone is aware, the city council did authorize paying a monthly salary to the municipal judge, and that's based on a recommendation from the North Dakota Supreme Court, so that, that has been done, there is a monthly salary, off the top of my head, I'm, I'm not, I, I don't know what it is, but it's not too much money, I guess, I, I guess I don't know what, what that number is, Brent, maybe you do, but.
I believe it was around 400, I believe it was around 400 a month, and that, we use the guidelines for where, where Horace fell currently and in near future. Based on centric code, centric code does outline specific dollar amount, like minimums, that we'd have to pay for that position. But yeah, it's, it's something that we do have to have in place, in order to do, for the, for the deputies to many of the enforcement, also, it helps us with regards to code enforcement, things like that, so. But anyways, it's, those are the names of the petitions that are received, and municipal court, like I mentioned earlier, we're knocking off items on our list to be able to have them in place, then we're going to be meeting with Onset, Near Future, to talk with the city prosecutors and get the final steps squared away, so.
Good.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Everybody else done?
Motion to adjourn.
All right, Brian makes a motion to adjourn, can I? Who's second?
I did.
Done, all right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Done.
Aye.
It sounds good.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks, guys.